Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the students in 2024 to the work of the education special. And I'd like to bring up some of these ideas we might have. So, good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank some wonderful sharing this evening. I can't help here like looking over at these wonderful leasing Austin High School students. And I spent, I guess, a couple of days in different celebrations at the high school. And last night, the science research symposium, I'm going to like date myself. It felt like I was at an SNL skit at certain moments of it. It was out packed out brilliant, brilliant research, creativity, lots of energy, and just like meaning. Like for those of you who are in education, if those of you who are parents get that, but those of us who've given our career to this, nothing warms our heart more than seeing our students be so successful and have these wonderful moments at these milestone events in their academic life. So, when you do know, I just want to give a couple of wonderful shout outs to our OHS Harvard senior students who were called in the SASH ceremony. The A and D eighth grade orchestra give real props. They play second with an excellent rating at the Music in the Parks Festival. The eighth grade band placed first in Class AA and second at the Parks, uh, Music in the Parks Festival in Connecticut. Uh, we had an MBK fellow Gavin Thomas Walters, who was the featured speaker. The New York State MBK symposium in Albany, phenomenal. I want to congratulate the Neil Cadet and Joel Jennings, who were inducted as the 24 or 25 MBK fellows. Uh, we had a wonderful, uh, OHS, uh, 2024 Seal of by Literacy recipient ceremony. Forty-three students received recognition for proficiency in this wonderful new commemorative signed by the governor, Seal of Literacy, Spanish branch, and ASL. It's terrific. We have senior sports ceremony held, which we can honor student athletes, of the athlete, um, of the year, Adriana Candtowis, uh, excuse me, can't say her name, can't, can't pronounce, thank you. Congrats Adriana, pardon. Sportsmanship Award winners Samantha, uh, Fajardo, Andrew Levin, and Gavin Thomas Walter. We have all the inductees, Peter Arlory from Class of Seventy-Five, and Dennis Mansware from Class of Sixty-Six, Class of Sixty-Six, phenomenal. Um, and we have community service award given to Karen Spring. Congratulations to our Claremont students who won, wait for it, wait for it, third place. We're first in math in the statewide elementary tournament, and while they did, we give it third in the state. So, good evening, everyone, at Claremont School tonight, hoping our Board of Education meeting. All right? I just want to thank all the students last night for the amazing science research symposium. It was so much fun. And that big, like, mark your calendars, everybody, please. There's a jazz benefit concert June tenth at seven p.m. to raise funds for the OHS fan trip to perform, because we got invited to perform at the Pearl Harbor Ceremony in Hawaii. So, not a great night to listen to wonderful music and for family cause. So, we ask everyone, please mark their calendars. So, um, that's my superintendent's update for this evening.
All right. There's only a few items on the agenda, so.
Just two, right?
Yeah. Um, next up, we'll move along to our 2.2 mascot update, and I'll turn it over to, turn it over to you.
All right. So, um, this evening, we have, for those of you who might be watching or helping, we have a huge number, fabulous, of Austin High School students who have been engaging with the unflappable, the ever enthusiastic, the Colored Ries all year and are outside consultants. Uh, we have Jessica here from Joy Riot, and she's going to give a presentation on the work, what's happened, on their research, and update the community and all of us on what's going on with this year's, um, conversation around the new mascot.
Good evening, everyone. First and foremost, I am Caleb Billhorn. I am a sophomore here at Austin High School. Uh, first and foremost, before we start the T K, I would love to thank everyone for your time, your patience, for being here, um, for supporting here, as well we have all people desire to show you. Um, I pray, or I ask that you may hear us, um, I ask that you may hear, uh, this everything that we say, and we ask that if you have any questions, uh, feel free, we'd love to hear your responses, and thank you.
Hello, my name is Shay Shandroff. I'm a senior at Austin High School. We are a group of students from OHS. Most of us are on the Athlete Peership Council, so a lot of us do play sports, but we do a lot more than that. Some of us are in robotics, student council, we're in cultural arts, we're in science research, and not only that, we have jobs, and we volunteer within the community, so Austin is very important to us.
Hello, my name is Isaiah Hillers. I'm a senior here at Austin High School. Uh, I want to share our Austin, and I'm very grateful tonight to be talking to you all about this, uh, with the topic tonight. But I want to let you know that this topic has been started all the way back to 2002 by this Austin was stripped of its mascot last. Um, this topic also got brought back up back three years ago within these small gymnasiums, where it's just small meetings, as we also attempted a lot of, uh, what is it, uh, field trips, as we put it, the risk is to be in Austin. Um, and with that, we realized that Austin is a very rich town of history, and we have to move past it, as we last had the Austin Indians before, and we realized that through that history, that again belongs with it, we are coming to the new age of, uh, hopefully the mascot.
My name is Jesse Simon. I'm a senior at Austin High School. I play golf, and I'm involved in the robotics club. Um, just got to talk a little bit about what Austin means to us. The first thing that I think when I think of Austin is cultural diversity. A lot of people, their first thought would just be, it's our hometown, it's where we all grew up and went to school, but I think of a very diverse culture that promotes innovation and growth, and that's a little bit of what has to do with this new mascot idea. We want to get more school spirit, and we want to grow as a community. Uh, like Isaiah said, we're very old in history, but we're very young in culture. So, this newer generation, they're all backing the new mascot, a new way to promote school spirit, a new way of bringing our schools together, and that's really the last part of our ways. We need the older generation's support with building this new mascot and starting this whole initiative and getting it really moving and putting it into our schools. And we just are really hoping that you guys help us out with thinking that last that was your story.
Uh, when we started the process of choosing the mascot, it was very important to us that this was a community-wide effort and very inclusive, and we felt the best way to do this would be, um, to hire a consultant to help with this multi-step plan that you can see on the timeline. So, here with us tonight, Joy Riot, is Jessica McCarthy.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jessica McCarthy, uh, the president and co-founder of Joy Riot, and we have been wanting a lot of research throughout the last six months on this project. Uh, as you can see here, we did, we started the bulk of this in January, really towards schools. We have various departments. Throughout the last six months, we've been meeting with individual student groups, community groups, different committees throughout the schools and the community as a whole. We conducted qualitative research, both in terms of secondary research and, um, looking at Westchester County schools and their mascots, wanted to make sure we didn't have two competing mascots, um, in a sort of, uh, step in the competition or athletics or anything like that. Uh, we conducted focus groups with students, teachers and faculty, staff, parents, members of the community that aren't, uh, connected to the school at this time, but may have in the past. We conducted quantitative surveys, um, again, out to the entire community, and finally narrowed it down to a couple of mascot options and presented a whole inch closer earlier this week. So, we'll talk about the results of all of that, uh, and then back over to the students to talk a little bit more about the process.
Um, hi, my name is Yala Alexander. I'm a junior at Austin High School and in our student council, I know I'm on team, and I'm in student council. This part of the SASH show is about engagement that we did with the other schools and students across the school. We had OHS radio talk shows, meetings with Roosevelt and A and D students, and I myself participated in an Austin TV mascot video that was aired to the entire school to talk more about the new mascot and to get a sense of the rest of the community and students' feelings about the mascot. And this was another way we, in communities, took together with the rest of the community. We had a mascot poll, and the mascot, DL, was mentioned during that.
Hello, my name is Brianna. I'm in Level Three. And why the new mascot topic has been brought up to our attention now is because the Austin High School is still the only school in the whole Westchester County to now have an official district mascot. And at first, although this topic wasn't really discussed about in our community, it has most certainly haven't talked about in our school. And the students were saying that there has been so much divergence and change, and you can see that here at Claremont, where everyone is sitting, that here the mascot is the Claremont Owl. You step outside the cafeteria, you see the owl printed on the blocks. Um, you know, you cross the street, A and D is the A and D rocks, and then at roadside is the roadside east, and then you go over to OHS, and then it just all pride. And because there's so much change, and you know, it's not really showing a unity, and that's why we're here advocating that we want unity, and that we believe that this will bring the schools together, right, bonding, and it will bring the students together. It will be united, it can really be all pride.
Uh, hello, my name is Maddie Allen. We are, we are, we are two sophomores, and we both have been participating in U of I P, and while always giving out to the community, we always wondered, like, we never had a mascot to represent how, like, we can represent ourselves, it just overall just not only of our high school, but everyone in Austin. And in terms of representation, we, um, we wanted to show other, other schools and, um, everyone who, like, everyone who attends, um, our games, that, um, having, having a mascot shows, um, represent, uh, sorry, representation and, um, try to, 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 to school.
An example of how, like, not having a mascot negatively affects our school is, for example, the cheerleading team. They gave all their efforts, they worked so hard and their time, you know, for this, like, final competition, just for it to go downhill, when at the end, all the cheerleading teams were giving back their scores, right? And the cheerleading team at OHS, they lost so many points just because they did not have a mascot. And it sounds crazy, and that's why we're here, you know, saying that we need a mascot so this doesn't happen again in the future.
As we stated before, we, we would like to acknowledge the fact that Austin is a rich town of history and need to appreciate the fact that what we've had before as mascots, such as the thing we, we want, what we want, is to make clear that there are people really on mascots. The New York State Board of Regents recently announced a point one twenty-three of the regulation of com- commissioners, commissioners, um, of education, which prohibits the use of indigenous team names, mascots, and all that.
Hello, my name is Joseph Post, senior here at Austin High School. I'm part of the, uh, Business Club, Dago Club, I'm also a varsity baseball player. Um, I just wanted to talk a little about how we conducted a lot of outreach during these last three years, um, having, uh, Jessica as our consultant with Joy Riot since January, and having a plan to be able to, uh, have outreach with, uh, people in our community. Um, as you can see, we have, we've done this through our few rights club or robotic club, our OHS News, our Booster Club, Athletics and Culture Arts, and I think that this shows that we've tried to be inclusive to everyone, and although it's very hard to reach everyone, our surveys, um, and our students can tell you that we've tried, uh, a very, we've had a very valid effort into reaching everyone and getting everyone's diverse opinion on this topic.
All right, now for the data and the hard stuff. Um, so I talked a little bit about our research methodology, again, qualitative, we did conduct it, the focus groups throughout the community. One thing that rang through throughout all of our conversations that was really clear was that, whether it was parents, people in the community, uh, teachers, principals, everyone came down to, hey, this is what the kids want, we will support them. This is something that is also, it's started with the kids, and this is truly something, uh, that they are, are striving for, this is something that we can get behind. And so, as we moved into the quantitative research, the survey, we made sure that we were able to parse out the research and look at the, um, look at the data as a whole throughout the entire community, but also make sure that there wasn't any major difference between what the students were saying and the community and knowing that as well. So, in order to make sure that we got throughout the community, um, we made sure to send out all staff emails, um, sent to all users via direct, uh, district and school OPLAS. The students posted posters throughout the schools, uh, visited the schools to encourage them to, uh, respond to the survey, shared with Village and Town text messages, posted on social media sites, uh, district website posting, and then Austin Proud River journal posting. So, really trying to get out there as many times as possible and make sure as many people as possible responded to this. Overall, we had almost three thousand individuals respond to the survey, again, with a good mix between, um, community members, alumni, parents, teachers, and students. So, one of the things that we asked in the survey in a couple of different ways was this idea of pride, and whether the, the concept of pride corresponds with the community. Overall, there's still positive response to the concept of pride. Students are really more mutual, but as we compare the, uh, people who are pro-pride and, and, um, people who are against it, it's still very positive. One of the things that we recommended, the, uh, this data, was to keep this concept of pride, whether it's all pride or pride in all that we are, um, and focus more on the corporation of a new mascot, speaking of mascot. Um, we specifically asked people, do you think the district should explore a mascot? Overall, mainly, the response was yes. Ninety-two percent of the entire community said that they want to explore the new mascot. Um, the percentage increased a little bit, we just looked at the student population. We also asked, um, something that came up in the focus groups and some of the conversations that we had throughout the community, was this idea of having one mascot throughout all of the schools, whether that is the same mascot across all or growing out through the schools. Again, overwhelmingly, people were really interested in this idea. Um, eighty-two percent of the entire community said yes, and seventy-three percent of the student population. As we think about a mascot, we also wanted to find out, what are some key attributes that were important to people? We asked about what the attribute is as a whole, and one of our questions specifically asked, what is the number one attribute that you think is important to the mascot? And so, the results you see here. Um, overall, two attributes rose to the top, one being local to Austin, and one being, um, aligned with the theme of pride. And as you can see here at the top, we have the whole community, they were leaning more towards local to Austin, while students were leaning a little bit more towards the pride theme. So, this is something, as we started to narrow down some of the responses that we got, we took a look at how things related to all of these different attributes and, and how we can make sure that in the final poll, we go into a few minutes, um, we made sure that we had at least one option that is local to Austin and at least one that aligns with pride. We also asked in open-ended question, um, we asked what people's ideas were for a new mascot. Now, while some people said, I don't know, just pick something, um, and other people said, you know, and things like, oh, I think this type of attribute really makes sense, here's why, without a lot of people who provided actual recommendations for the final mascot. As you can see in the word cloud here, overwhelmingly, we got a lot of responses for the lion. Um, the next top responses were Indian owl, eagle, otter, and osprey. When we evaluated these top options against some of the activity parameters, um, we narrowed it down to lion and owl based on making sure that there were no other theme at schools that also had those same, uh, mascots, as well as including options that conflicted with the interstate regulations. So, that's why we got down to lion and owl as the top options. We then just really put out a poll, prepped together a short rationale for each of these options, and asking people to vote on which they think best represents Austin. As you can see here, overwhelmingly, the lion won. Seventy percent of the total population, um, and eighty percent of the students wanted the lion. And this, similar to the survey, we got almost three thousand responses, and this, again, was going to the entire community, students, parents, teachers and staff, alumni, community members. So, where do we go from here? Uh, our recommendation based on this research is to move forward with the lion. If the board and green likes that tonight, uh, we continue with phase one, which will be concepting the high school mascot designs. Part of the Joy Riot creative process is to have what we call in our creative grade a list of considerations. These are things that we make sure that in the options that we explore, we are hitting at least one of, of all of these considerations in some way. So, it could be that all of the options hit this, it could be that one of the options hit this. Um, so, for example, some of the options or the considerations that came out of the research, we need to have been able to represent all facets of the student body, athletics, arts, STEM, and so on. Um, another question that came up throughout the research was how can we address the gender neutrality parameters? So, these are all things that we're thinking about through the creative development process. We present multiple options to, to make that one, and then refine that based on the feedback. Once we've got our new mascot for the high school, we'll, we'll apply that to the other schools and the district running as a whole. And ultimately, back to what I did like the lion, right? And before we turn back to the students, I just wanted to make sure we understand the process of part of the original agreement with Joy Riot is to continue, you know, you can't even, we're, we're just giving words to things as opposed to what does the image look like? So, the, the step tonight after they present is basically give them a green light to continue with the work, to be creative, do design work, get feedback, and then come back for another presentation.
Hi, my name is Yala Erickson, and I'm a junior at Austin High School. And the reason that we've been advocating for lions to be our mascot is because it aligns with our slogan of pride in all that we are. The lions also represent courage and strength, and as you can tell from our recent polls and surveys, that's what resonates with us as a school district and as community. Um, once again, we just want to really thank you so much for listening to everything we have to say tonight, and I really go ahead to you guys, put everything you're saying into consideration. And if you have any questions, feel free.
I think we give our students a wonderful round of applause. So, and among those lines, it takes, uh, you know, a word, it is a beautiful statement of governance and democracy in action, and we can just tell the heartfelt work and energy and the prep work and the research that we'll get behind it. And I just, from the bottom, I just want to congratulate your lot of adults that have learned how, and we all, just by watching tonight, but great job tonight, great, great presentation. Great, thank you so much. Um, thank you to all of our students who have been working so hard, and this is so many years. I have the privilege of being on a communications committee this year, which, when I, we were reorganizing about a year ago, I did not realize it was going to be so much work, and involve so many needs and this huge initiative, and I will tell you quite candidly that I was skeptical, um, at the start, and, um, the committee members, I, I think there were many of them who were skeptical as well, really put you all through the pieces. Um, and I want to just say that I know from many, many months ago, when, when I was a student, coming up with an idea and taking the time to research it, and really dig into it, feel so passionately about it, right, and you just think that you're launching off a point, and then you have a whole new group of adults who are second guessing it, asking you to do more. I know what that feels like, and you were there, but you, with a smile on your face, you all went to work, and you went to work this whole year, and, you know, you raised our consultant, right, and that we want pride to assist and kind of, you know, I think the goal there was really to have a neutral force that was outside and disconnected from the district, to be able to, without motion, very analytically, guide, um, and analysis of this issue. And it was, it was great that you were so willing to embrace that and work with that and guide, shape, and advise. Um, this is a really big deal, and it would not be here, we would not be considering this tonight, and you would not have been a consultant several months ago if this wasn't a student-led and driven initiative, because I'm not sure that the adults have the appetite to tackle this issue, because it's controversial, right? It's controversial. It's going on not just in Austin, it's going on in Bayak, it's going on in Europe, Almar, you know, uh, Liverpool, right? It's going on throughout the state, and, um, it's actually very, very difficult to get companies to respond or request proposals to engage in this kind of work, because it is so contentious. Um, but Austin has never really been one to shy away from doing hard things, and so this was a hard thing, and, you know, whatever happens, you should be enormously proud of yourself, and all of the hard work that you've put in to this very hard thing. So, um, I want to just really give you a round of applause, and thank you for that. Um, I'm going to open it up to our trustees here for questions, comments, and signs. And so, I'm not front row.
So, I, I just want to say, first of all, I, I really love the fact that you guys came together, advocated, worked hard, you know, very clear, you guys put a lot of passion, a lot of fire behind this campaign, and you did everything and anything you could to try to make no stone unterm. You guys put a lot of thought and hard work into this. Congratulations on all the hard work, firstly. Keep on advocating for yourselves, keep coming together the way you do. It takes a village, it takes Austin. Thank you very much, I really appreciate it.
Go ahead.
Great work on the presentation, great presentation. Let's tie it, you have the talking points, finance and consulting guys, but you got a high bar next, so. I just have one question, just to, you know, clarify for the board and the community and anyone listening. Next- Next step in the process, now you have the visual, assuming the board is ready by the line. You have the opportunity then to be creative, correct, using the lion or lions, plural, using the hoe, not using the hoe, using the pride, not using the pride. I just wanted to get that clarification that that's the next step, they might be bringing lion or lion or pride.
Correct, yes, the green light is move forward with lion as the theme and we looked up at the options based on that and considerations coming out of research.
Thank you, great work.
I'll just add that I can only say it was this much work to pick the mascot and really great job, well done. I'm so excited. I'd like to be the idea of having the mascot grow over the students and having the white hair as a target to cook and hand and break them.
Any other comments? Do you have a clarification? Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
So thank you to Mr. and all of our hard work and coming down here today, speaking to us and making your points. So thank you for the support that you did and the street of your organization from the board. So you're proud of yourself.
I did have a quick question, although it's actually. Thank you. I may miss this, I apologize, I have a child care issue, I expected this as a few minutes late, sorry about that. But in terms of the lion moving forward, I think we all have this image in our heads of like this African lion with this big mane. But that's not necessarily what we would eventually be talking about once the design phase gets going, right? There are mountain lions, there are all different kinds of lions or apes, but that's still sort of phase two?
Yep, so part of the exploration is understanding how the lion then comes to life. What does that look like? Is it multiple lions? Is it a symbol of a lion? As you mentioned, is it a mountain lion or an African lion? So all of these things, I know the rationale, all of these things based on the list of considerations will be thought about by our team and presented to all of our options.
So and again, this is just part of our contract with Joy Riot, that it's just the end of this phase and the next phase of it is to take this and put it into designing back for final approval to the board because at the end of the day, everyone knows boards of education are responsible for money and that kind of approval would be required to, you know, create the, to the design, to the design work, et cetera, every words into places.
And that was part of what was already funded by the board, right? So we're basically agreeing like, don't do this work, let's move forward to the next phase, but it's not going to cost any additional funding, like we're already, we've already entered into that contract. So I think our vice president has a motion at this time. I'll let her make the motion, I'll explain more in a second. All right, I need to make a motion to move, I have 3.1 public comment period, up to right now. I'll second that and then I'll call for discussion before we vote. I actually, we got printouts of the agenda and I've never really noticed on other meetings, but I do see printed on this meeting that there's audience recognition under 2.2 and 2.3. Normally we wait when we have two presentations like this to section three, which is our first audience recognition section. But we do have community members here, right? And I do appreciate that this says audience recognition under each agenda item. So given this fear is that I would support moving it up to a public commentary on this issue. Any further discussion? All in favor? All right, opposed, abstention. All right, I'm going to invite the public now, who might have any comments, to, if there are any audience, raise their hand. And we'll just sort of, my prescription glasses are only sunglasses tonight, so I believe I have a palette? Okay, all right. Yeah, just a minute, you'll have to come up to the mic, it's okay. But that's the only way that anyone watching virtually will be able to actually hear you. You'll have to say your name, you'll have to say your address, you've got approximately three minutes. And it's got to be on topics related to this or technically related to the facilities update, which we haven't had yet. And then there's a second public comment section at the very end of the meeting and that's where we got any school related issue.
Hello, 3890, Chris Martin, Austin, I have just seen this graduate, just a couple of weeks here. This is a question or a thought, would there be consideration given to our amazing, talented art department here at the school? And perhaps bring them into the actual design at any point in time, see a graphic designer to its artists to paint those things. Their work is outstanding, so I just love that. My continued student.
Wonderful suggestion. Thank you. Do they have any other comments from in person, audience?
I'm sorry, I'm glad to answer your question. So I'm part of the National Art Society and I've been drawing some of my sketches and also working with the other students from the art club. And, you know, before this just to like, you know, break the storm or anything like that, but we kind of just left it off to the side because, you know, we wanted to do this presentation, you know, get feedback. And yes, we can certainly be working with the art department and, you know, as you said, with these talented students. And, you know, because we're Austin, because we're sort of diverse and we're also talented, we really want to make this, you know, come to life.
Thank you so much. Anything else from the audience in person? I'm going to ask if our virtual audience who may be listening from home or elsewhere will raise their virtual hand if they'd like to chime in. All right, we have no virtual hands raised, so I'm going to thank everyone again so very much for your time. Thank you for being here this evening. I know it's also not easy to get here and it's very hard for you to stand up in front of a room like this, but y'all did a wonderful job. And thank you for your actual dedication and I hope you have a wonderful evening. And I'm sensing a green light from the board. Green light, green light, okay. Nicole, wherever you are, we got a green light. All right, we now continue on with 2.3, our every item of the agenda, which is the facilities update of the scope of work of our overall facilities plan, which I think we've been discussing around the board table now for soon, until two years. We've been working on this very diligently up until about February or so, which is great to work on our budget. And we are receiving the work now and we are allowed to hear from our consultants about where we are.
Good evening, everyone. And from all that, I thank you all for joining those who are in person and virtually. The, a little, the board to be brave from the discussion of it, for those of you who were probably in the hall. We, they gave a charge to the administrative team, to Alina, to me, and to our consultants. They gave very specific pieces of information and we've had multiple meetings, many conversations, site visits. And tonight I'm just excited to share the work that came out of all of that. We've had the ability to present good feedback from three meetings of our facilities committee before tonight's presentation. So just to give an overview, this capital improvement plan is a transformative plan to renovate and expand school facilities to meet 21st century needs of our students and staff. That's our theme one. Our vision centers on building and improving district facilities to support the growth success of everyone within our educational community. Our students, our staff, our parents who come join us at different events, we need space. We have compromised spaces, brand classrooms, hallways, and room utilization rates that significantly impact the ability to schedule for student needs. The plan tonight you'll see will be, and it's been ongoing as our board president stated. We have been utilizing, due to the wise stewardship of our district funds by Alina, we've been using our district capital budget, capital reserves, on New York State aid. But this plan tonight also incorporates a potential bond. In our plan, we have done past work, the Board of Education and Austin have been a terrific steward of good work. A terrific steward of their facilities, a terrific steward of the community's greatest assets, which happen to be their facilities, their physical assets. I don't know how I mentioned so quickly, so let me do. Okay, I did that happen. There we go. There it is, it's clicking to best. So in our homework that we've been charged to do since midwinter, we have been gathering information from previous board meetings. We've been giving updates all along. We've had multiple meetings of our facilities committee, school based meetings, including faculty meetings and teaching events, exploring learning events, community survey, which gives a plethora of information. A traffic study which helped paint out the community survey and allowed us to put forward the capital improvement project in this year's budget to do a, another needs, leave course or a driveway out to stormy town road. We were able in that process of to investigate and get permission for a smart line at the bottom of Main Courtland and Route 9. In the spring, the Board of Education, and in this process, the cost, the price ticket for our capital improvement plan is approximately $255 million, that's the one many of us spoke about when we saw. But the Board of Education in the spring gave us a charge, basically to provide an educational plan that meets the program needs of our students and do so with a zero tax impact. Tonight's presentation is that plan. Included in this will be a timeline about the work that needs to happen now because we have a potential bond date recommendation for the Board of September 24, 2024. At the end of this presentation, you'll see more specificity on that timeline. But tonight, we are talking about the work that we did to address this. The next decision will be at the next meeting, a potential resolution for the Board to adopt on this. And then if the Board does do so, we will put into place very quickly our communications plan that we have been working on, that we utilize meetings, website, Facebook live events, videos, a newsletter, summer and back to school events. I did get a lot of outreach from some community members and our PTAs and people who want to help with the process, so I do appreciate that. So tonight I am very excited to bring up our consultants, who we spent a lot of time in person, on video and on phone calls, to talk about this transformative plan for Austin's school system.
All right, thank you. Every time I'm here, I have a bigger speech before me. And I have this impression, I mean, last time I was a traffic engineer, but I never thought I'd be worrying about this again. Right now, I'm just gonna do about it. I have my work cut out for me. As Mary said, this has been a kind of a blur of meetings. We've walked the district again, we've gone through all of the buildings, we've gone through every bit of this plan inside of that, both on stage and over Zoom. And it's been a really good process to refine this plan that we had before you, and I'm going to present it again to you tonight. I think you'll find that most of what we're going to present doesn't really look all that different. So I say refine it, it really is refine it, and contrast and change to get us to a really good fiscal place in terms of the bonds. And at the end of this presentation, you'll hear, I'm going to stick to the bond scope right now, but the presentation, we're talking about budget and some other capital related work. So I just started the high school here again. You can see here in the middle, we still have some comments. I'll get into the particular details of just the comments of the second, we have a large plan, but that still exists in this plan. Under this proposal, there's a one story, there's two comments that I have some rendering that we can look at here in a moment. We're doing a complete renovation, really a new music area, a theater adjacent to this big commons that's in, I think. Renovations of the locker rooms on the first floor still exists, so that'd be a complete renovation. In part because it's needed, but also because we need installing structural supports there to support two more levels above that. And then of course, we still have renovations of the existing church, which will consist of a theater and a vocal space and dancing room. And then we have this steam edition that's connected both to the existing high school as well as the renovation of the church. On the second floor, there'll be a fitness center over the existing locker rooms, so that's still the same. Just below that fitness center is a connecting link that will lead from the second floor of the high school to the steam edition and the renovated church and the theater space. And then in orange, you see the steam edition and the second floor of the church, there would be balcony seating over the theater area for just additional seating for our guests. And then on the third floor of the work, looking at the high school, there'll be new science classes and additional, the third, the steam edition has a third level as well, that also is connected to the high school via a connector just below the science classes. We zoom into the courtyard space with the student comments. You see on the top, we have a covered courtyard, that is the courtyard, they currently exist there adjacent to the office and the entrance. That would now be interior space used for seating, additional lunch seating as an example. Then have the capacity for 17 people. Just below that, it's a continuation of the student comments, again seating for additional 54 students. And then below that closest to, now there's an open air patio space, covered patio. I have some renderings I can show you here in a second, but that will have seating for additional 91 students, if they're in good weather. And then you can see the plan there that shows in pink renovations that are taking place to, or actually renovations that the edition is taking place. Music program, which will include digital music recording studios, digital arts, or Mr. Van piano and practice rooms. This design actually is great size for these programs in terms of volume and characteristics, which is great to be in for that program. Here you can see some example renderings of what the student comments might look like. Again, this is the single story or in some cases the story and a half of volume space. The top left image is if you're standing up at the top of the stairs, you see the bottom, looking out toward your time. And then the top right image is standing on the patio, looking back at the building, back at the place. And at the bottom, we have inspection there, we see we have tiered stairs, seating, places for students to gather. On the far left is the covered patio, which is used to as additional outdoor space during, you know, season, for the seasons to allow. This is a large plan, first, second, and third floor of both the theater dance, as well as the staff program. This program has not changed much at all, that actually hasn't changed at all. There's been slight refinements to the circulation space, mainly of the connector at the step portion of the edition that's built in this design. So minor refinements, but they add some potential budget saving for us. And then looking at the section here of the theater dance proposal with the balcony seating, the vocal rooms, there's some office space, and then the stem edition. seating, the vocal rooms, there's some office space, and then the steam edition to the right side of that, you can kind of see how that connects relationships to the existing high school, the existing two stories that are connected on top of the floors. From there, we move on to the proposed middle school, 78 Building. This plan has not changed at all in terms of program, there's been slight refinements to the design in terms of some fenestration and a few other minor changes, but this plan and program is, again, stayed the same. The concept here is, on the backside facing the woods in the proposed field, would be the classroom bars, kind of the private side of the drill of the design. And then on the front side of the building, we have a lot of the faculty cafeteria, some of the big box programs that were more of the public side, public-facing part of the program. That theme continues up on the second and third floors. So again, you see some of those bigger box spaces, like the art and dining, you know, do transfers all through stories, with the classroom bar, calling it there on the back side of the building, continues all the way up both of those, second and third floors. Looking at the renderings, you've seen, most of you have seen this rendering before, what we did here is, again, we haven't changed the program, so the volumes of the spaces stay the same, the floor plan stays the same. We basically reduced where applicable, some of the overhangs that you're in, we've taken those things off, so we are here on the rendering, but in using our dollars of design time wisely, we just looked at this from a book and stick, we're working with errors and all this to modify this building, very, very minor, even aesthetically, but add some cost savings. Yes. Would you just, if you take out some points that are overhanging, is that very clear? So these sorts of things, these overhangs, you see here on that side of the building, those are the things that we're looking at. Really, they don't have any functional relationship or function to go on in the design study. And we're able to achieve the design study we feel in general will be here with the location of some of the layers. Looking at the site plan, this is, again, of course, the entire site, AMD to the bottom right, against you Claremont where we're at currently, all the way to the far right. A few key things to point out here. Part of the C, but the dark areas is the proposed access road that we were talking about, parking lot that was just recently approved as part of your budget for the Option A, as part of the bond project, will be, what you see in blue here, which is the 78 Building, the additional parking store there, which that includes, as part of the bond project, everything that is shown in the floor plan, the renderings, as well as some green area behind the building, up to the living room of that apartment. Option B would be a grass field, a level play area beyond, where you see in this larger area. And then option C would be an optional turf field. Those options we're going to talk about later, and as probably later.
Now, those currently are open areas, so.
That is correct. And this is just an ar- an ar- a plan, what we're talking about. And option A is what is proposed as part of the bond project, option B, which is a grass field, and then option C is a turf field, we'll talk about later on, has implications to the project outside of the bond. Then finally, here at Claremont, this plan hasn't really changed too much. You can see here, we're still talking about renovating the space that we're occurring, so that would be a renovation of the cafeteria space, basically looming out a portion of that back wall, so that we can access to the classrooms on the other side of that wall, that would be covering the servery, would take over the existing servery that condition seating, we gain a little bit of seating in the back there. As you can see, seating and servery space is needed, we have equipment, but generally we have inside of servery, out here, of course, we need some curtains. And then behind the stage here, there's two additional classrooms that currently exist. Those classrooms would be for the music, the habits, over in small space, or if it's not really quick to be using classrooms. You see here in the center of the building, almost adjacent to the additions that we did, just finished, that kind of square, that'll be an elevator to get to the addition that will be recently completed, as well as three additional classrooms, you see here in green, or sorry, six. And then below that addition, we're showing alternative fitness space, and I can show you more of that here in a second. This is in a large plan, we have to, as you can see, here at the bottom, it's kind of a simple way, it was in the kitchen, just above that would be the servery. That space right there currently is the two classrooms that are on the side of that back wall. That allows us to take over the servery, some of this additional space here for circulation to current corridor, to expand seating cafeteria, state free here, these two classrooms behind this addition are perfect for using classrooms. Then looking at the addition, right there is that elevator, it's kind of that open space, if you come down the stairs to the addition that we put on last year, that will be modified to a lot more appropriate elevator based down to this level. And then we have six additional classrooms to go from the classrooms that were currently taken to expand the space with a stair, thinking you have to have that play area. And did forget to mention that play area, this addition will encourage the existing castle play area a little bit, that is being expanded on the back side, so there's a little muscle, play area for muscles during training. Then below that addition, here at the grade level, we're proposing that this would be able to air, additional fitness, play spaces for students, so that has, it's covered, it's lighted, and we're being able to extend the outdoor use by the fact that it is covered, getting students and gym class potential, more program time outside. Any questions before we jump to the question?
No questions. The basement of the common, I think that's the common area, I think you said stairs for three levels, consider something like that, so make sure that's all accessible to each level?
Yes, I mentioned stairs for the seating, so I guess we will have to be.
So it would be a house. So the whole level would be accessible?
Yes.
Okay, right. With Claremont, I got two questions, I guess, you know, the noise of the play area, the hotel, the restaurants, I'm guessing in this design, you know, in terms of that, it's kind of like, I've done a work on a lot of it, just questions there.
Sure.
And then, and then the other piece, I guess, of that is, if that open space, is it possible to have that space without columns, without seating that would be altering the cost? If that could be a full open space versus having columns that are needed, is that considered?
You need a center of the space.
Yeah, I mean, I see like the drawing, there's columns around the classes, I'm just saying, like, you know, if this is really not an area space, it's almost like a gymnasium, but we got columns, we got a lot of, we got already got right type of template.
Yeah.
It's not maybe possible, it's expensive, right? Once we get into design, it's a thing that's difficult to turn out there.
I did. So I was trying to take some notes, Rod, you were pointing out some sort of what happened. Do we just go back, building by building, and show what has changed, what's in, what's out from the original plan, and what are we talking about? And then is it those changes, what's in, what's out, cosmetic, functional, and if there's functional changes, what, if any, impacts product impact? Can you repeat that, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Great question.
So here at the high school, the big change was at the student commons, going from that three-story student commons to, I'll call it a story and a half for our university. So it's a reduction in the weight of the student commons, that has a significant impact on material mechanical systems. In terms of the seating, though, it did not have any impact to the seating, proposing to have that space for, you know, flex, for functions.
Okay, so that doesn't change anything in terms of, as we get into operational pieces down the road, like, you know, the school, high school, part of the reason why it's built on campus, because there's not enough lunch, literally the kids are going to eat very early, and there's just not enough to have that, a hard group. This change doesn't impact the goal of getting more students to be able to lunch, and as for operation on campus, the operational, I said, excuse me, you can still do carts and serverys outside, we'll get all the columns down the road.
Sure.
This does not impact in any way, shape, or form. Three hundred kids in the old plan had lunch, now they're 150, and they're four tiny, no , there's no.
Okay. The only other real change here would be at the steam edition, and it was minor changes to, right over here, we just modified and translated into some circulation space, and solid simplified it, but it does have a big impact on construction cost. But again, no functional, no functional changes to the program.
I think his answer's right, if we can go back to the conference, I love the question you have, I love the question about lunch, but currently, if you do the mental math, 1,600 kids at the high school, current cafeteria, about 300 kids. This adds, like, almost another, like, was it 270, almost another 300, so you divide three lunch periods, you can serve all kids through this design. It does not impact, and we added more outdoor space, actually, covered outdoor space, so we get, even on very hot sunny days, you know, kids can be covered and be outdoors during days where it's a little sheltered. So if you lose that three-story beautifully, the design aesthetic, that comments, but it does maintain the functionality, and it adds, it's just exactly the charge you gave us, maintain the program, but look at it from a lens of, is there cost savings here?
I'm just going to say, I'm told to Mary, the initial atrium design was so beautiful, and I hate to see it go, but around emotional standpoint, from analytical standpoint, I get it, but we can all save, just a moment for the three-story atrium. I really, really liked it.
That was, it was a beautiful, beautiful architectural, it was, that was pretty cool to call it that, but.
Oh, wow.
I understand. And we still got wind, I mean, that wasn't, was it loud, was it loud? But we still have, it's not valid, all about, not right, um, we sound like.
We do have natural lighting, I know it's hard to see, we can inch at the slide, but yeah, there's plenty of natural lighting that would be in that space. Oh, we're probably, yeah, we'll have to, Claremont, I think, I don't see it, but I'm. This, this area, yeah, if you watch out. Say that, I'm sorry.
So the question was, would this be a, instead of close off, if they are intended to break actually, the classroom is kind of.
I have a question. I don't think it's for you, but it is just a general question. This is the first time we're seeing an option A, B, C, kind of connect out differently. My question is about the secret process, though, we have to do a secret process first, and so do we seek her for the whole thing, as if we're?
When they're presenting, it's in the presentation, that's a great question.
Okay, sorry.
Great question.
So here, at the middle school, 78 Building, it's really, you know, the changes here are minor tweaks, facade, aesthetic, change, not significant at all in terms of the much faster change of the settings. Program here has not changed at all, okay? Cosmetic aesthetic, no change, capacity, no change, and function rules, not that.
Chris, I think you compete with the fan over there, have a big fridge gap, and just get that.
Sure. That better. And then here at Claremont, really the only change would apply to what we were talking about before, on the space, the fitness area below, previously that was an enclosed, entirely enclosed, mini gym, if you will, so the change, change here is to not close that entirely. You still have program functionality. I think the space is a little more versatile, but it's not a closed, particularly in the space now.
Yeah, and then each classroom is the sixth.
So that's a different system, and so what was the thinking, what the data, just more of that, we just did the two, did you get a row, what was it, what's it?
So, as the board notes, there were two presentations, a six and an eight, and the conversation is, it comes down to the math, it's very out of control, that we're talking about Claremont, we're trying to eat with the women here, can you imagine what it's like for Christine trying to run staff meetings in here? So if you do the math here, you've got expanded cafeteria, you lose four classrooms, with this addition, you gain two additions, the six, six classrooms, you replace the ones you're losing, you're getting two additional, and a new space down below. The eight classrooms, which we were asked to explore, and many of the board members saw that in designs, and what it did, though, the eight classroom addition bumped out the back of the addition that was added into more than half of the current playground and bus turnaround parking lot that's back there. So we lose a bus staging area, and you lose the opportunity, it impinges upon the opportunity of going down, if one ever wanted to create another P E rest room down. So by redesigning the below area and making it six, you gain two additional classrooms, and you maintain the ability to do bus staging and having another P E and Playstation area outside. We could just add a little bit more soil to the end to extend it, because the six classroom goes into it a little bit, but certainly recover before. The savings on all of this is about $4 million, like, correct? It's in at the later on in the presentation, but we had extensive conversations with Christine over that, and we analyzed it, would we love, now, of course, a nominee's question, I think for those of you in the facilities committee meeting, some people said, well, can you make a pivot? Like, could you do, you know, come out two or four, and then, yeah, interesting, come out two or four, and then do a little right angle to do two more out the side, so we didn't lose that essential bus turnaround area and another outdoor play area. The problem with that is that it added significant cost, that it's a very slow plan, and it would definitely impact the ability to create a future driveway or Egress or a hall path that way, right? So tonight, going back to the theme of what you asked of this, we gain more classroom space. This, by the way, this cafeteria, in fact, I think I can repeat it as many times as possible, it is the worst servery area in the district, why, there's just one area, the kids are in hallways at lunch, not enough room here, so this is a must do, you have to fix this. You have to replace the classrooms, and this design gains too, maintains your playground, and importantly maintains that bus turnaround area for Egress.
Have a future, pick a future iteration, should there be future board size, that should be a closer space, that can be contacted?
Sure, you could do that, you have to add cannibals, you have to add certain, you know, add access to, but yes, structurally, you can do that. That was another question that people had asked, and you can do that, but you do money, but you can do that, right?
And on that, on that, so you would for people to keep less of that, that we're not going to do that additionally, because you want to mess with it, like, there's no
we're not going to do that additionally, because you want to mess with it, like, there's no...
Okay, that is our recommendation to you, it's your choice.
So in terms of the design changes, that's the extent of, you know, I can sort of program that, um, and then I'm gonna let Paul talk about budget differences, although he won't, I haven't, I hope.
Yeah, I, I think I'm trying to keep it, I'm trying not to steal Paul's, I gotta talk about something, so there are a few, we'll talk about the option of the fields, and then, um, just to scope, uh, okay, there'll be one thing that we have to talk about, really, in the first part.
Okay, so, we go over what we did to come up with the numbers, what was developed prior to twenty five, um, those numbers were generated up to about two years ago. So, we didn't feel, um, that we wanted to basically move forward on the new plan with two-year-old ones. So we actually, um, recalculated the entire project based on what was, who needs were having, so that we can come up with a realistic number, a realistic escalation, and, um, that's what we did. So on the high school, on the additions and renovations, um, before it was a seventy-four, six, twenty-four, seven, and I came down, Chris, remember what the changes were, uh, to about sixty-seven. On the seven-eight building, this is, uh, was at one forty-two, and it has dropped to one thirty, uh, point, um, now, when, uh, when we were talking about, we saw the sketches of, there were three options that were built into the plan. The first option is what was, uh, is part of the, uh, overall, so the first option, option A, which was just the minimal green space and, uh, the area that we need for, uh, stronger energy, and, uh, minimal green space, uh, quietly stayed in, that's what option A has. Option B, which, uh, that was about twenty levels, create the site where necessary, necessary to support the building. Option B, the, uh, grass area behind the building, uh, and when all the earthwork coming down the hill, it's about a sixty-foot, uh, drop in elevation, but when all the earthwork taking out, the trees creating levels, topsoil and grass, will add about one point two, so it is about one point, oh, sure, one point three, uh, on top of that. And then, the original plan would show the, uh, synthetic turf field, tennis courts, uh, will have, uh, eight million off, uh, onto the base, so that's technically not a project. So what we built into the number here is, uh, the first option, option A, and we don't talk about, um, some of the other options, right, well, that's why I didn't further that some of the programs, to give another alternative to consider. Uh, the, uh, the Roosevelt, the originally we had, I think, a house with a program, right now, that program is, uh, the exact cost that is, I don't know, the design, what you're using it for is, is still being worked on. Uh, that would be handled through some of your capital projects that you're probably have been on, some of the other projects that we're doing, we'll see that in a couple of, so. Brookside Elementary, um, Brookside is a couple of twenty's, the program for Brookside was, uh, renovation, adding a small addition to the kitchen, renovation of the cafeteria, removing the backstage, and basically enlarging the cafeteria area, great, renovating the kitchen server, still in the project, and putting up, moving to a capital, and I'll show you that in a second. And then the gymnasium, that was bigger, which was nine, um, nine point nine, right around ten weight, uh, that one came out, so that was created from school. And Claremont, that you just looked at, uh, originally was sixteen point four, and now it looks in at twelve point two, so they picked up about four point two million dollars on that. This is where I was saying that some of the other projects are working. Now, what this is, is this is a chart that you do all of the projects that you've been doing, um, from your twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Well, on the, the backend, remember that, there's what, when you go through that project. Park Elementary School, um, which was a twenty-two, twenty-three project, uh, is one where, um, the construction took pretty half, that's on that building, um, and you created this. Uh, Brookside Elementary School, which is a twenty-three, twenty-four project, is up and stayed in, right now, that's a custom edition building, uh, that one, uh, is up and stayed in, if you, since we get that back, kind of an entry that's anticipated to start next spring.
Paul, could you take a little, he tries to support the, uh, first day, and you're on, sure.
Uh, uh, right now, meeting times are between twenty-four, twenty-six weeks for a technical review, and then the, uh, fiscal advisor, he does the fiscal advisor, they're everything. That's somewhat up in the air, um, I understand that, as well, they have a number of people done that, and one conference on that, but they're potentially putting in a, uh, uh, the executive review again, uh, so, the whole process, I mean, we accelerate, we pull through it, but we can't count on that, we have to, we have to figure what we know now, right now, right now, it is taking between six and eight months to get something through this. So that's what we really have to face. So our numbers are based on what we know to be now, not what they're proposing. Uh, the access drive to Stormy Town. So when you just passed the twenty-four, twenty-five, now, we're having a kickoff meeting with the engineers and civil engineers and architects to review that, I mean, it's actually tomorrow, so we can get that, well, moving forward. And the, the air conditioning, again, that was twenty-four, twenty-five, that maybe is also tomorrow, so that we can go, can we get that and take off, and moving forward. You're currently in the middle of the district wide energy performance contract, uh, what you're spending in twenty-four, twenty-five is what we've allocated, your energy performance contract is large, and that, like, you have about seven point one million dollars, uh, that you're working on through, uh, uh, this year and next year. Uh, Break, Breakside Elementary, I'm sorry, Brookside Elementary School Cafeteria renovations, um, could be in twenty-five, twenty-six. So that's where we're talking about renovations to the cafeteria and kitchen, and, um, that's what we couldn't, uh, to move that into the capital, the budget corporation's. But in that, the plan that you see previously, had a new gym addition with a, uh, it was a decor space below, and then there was no banner space below, well, that whole addition is, uh, been removed.
Right, just to clarify, so, for Brookside, zero as part of the bond right now, the progress, and what that means is, there were two parts to Brooks, there was a gym expansion, correct? And this cafeteria, where cafeteria work would stay, proposed, but gets moved here as part of, that's out of all the that here, it's a new budget, and then it's not, wherever the gym is out, gone, completely, that's, so that's, so what, again, impacts that, I don't remember, why the gym came up, obviously, the building administration, um, developed, needed that, you talked to that, you just want to make sure, again, that's, what the impact might not be, gym, is that any kind of nice to have, or like, you know, kids don't have any space, do you have that creation now?
Um, well, I cherish, I'm very, um, answer that, but I love your, to, one of our work groups, what we really realized, the gymnasium, you're, you're, you're masters in school, can support a gym, so does this, not students, this, can support a gym, but, um, in that school, what your gym is filled up, you want to have a lot of storage inside the gym and right outside the gym, and then you have storage containers outside and in the apartment line. So, the discussion what we're having is, we're going long, we can actually create some more gym space, personal space, by finding other locations for storage. So moving the storage and everything, and opening the space up to, um, greater students or, um, use. So we talked about, we're building this, uh, new classroom, uh, building over on the wing, which, uh, right now, only the second floor is being used for classrooms. The lower level, uh, has windows, it has an elevator, right going down to it, uh, so it's set up to, uh, basically add classroom in future, if that's what you want. One of the things we need to discuss is the potential of moving the two classrooms underneath the gym and over to that building, and taking open a space below of them as additional storage. So we're trying to work some of the areas, the space underneath the gym right now is not accessible, so it's, it's a humor renovated space, but it's not accessible, moving it over to the addition will make it, the classroom accessible. So that was the, the thoughts.
If I can add, it's a very, um, helpful, when you visit the site and see it, the second gym was basically almost a mirror image of the one that's there, back to back, it's about a ten million dollar project, but when we looked at it, we saw the current space they had, that this building falls, right, has more kids, but one gym, I, but the space at Brookside was, was compromised by lack of storage, so we clustered this area inside the current gym. So this redesign of looking at storage underneath, going to the heart of the problem, removing all those storage mentioned, hallways inside the gym, maximizing the current space that we had, creating a new instructional space, and the additions that we're funding through the district budget, came to us that we could maintain program, but again, uh, do so at a different cost.
And then what, um, was discussed is that in your twenty-six, twenty-seven budget, uh, if you want to enlarge the space, uh, the, this seventy building, of the field work, we can do all the earthwork, intermiting the field, to grass field, to your grass field, and you can use an allocation from the twenty-six concern budget, so it does increase the cost of the work. And, and, uh, Roosevelt, you have to be, uh, look at that, same.
And those fields, importantly, can be described in use for interest for less than that, like, they could just be grass.
That's, we have, yeah, I'm just gonna say, I, uh, we're probably, uh, that, uh, see where the books are.
Like, like, uh, words, like, what they're doing, like, this.
Oh, I see, uh, well, the, the option B is basically.
Yeah, I, I don't think the cost would be, um, uh, you have that, uh, excellent.
So, this is just to give you an overview of, of how you've been paying for all of these projects, everything, um, that is not, is basically representing forty-three million dollars in capital reserve and budget appropriations, um, so this, again, is what Paul presented when we were live. So you reveal, Paul, that the overall bond that we were contemplating was in an area of two hundred and fifty-five, if you add up the two-ten and the forty-three, you see that we still are in a two-fifty-three area, um, but we're only bonding, um, two hundred and ten million, um, and we have these other projects, um, that will be covered with other funding streams, um, which will be capital reserves again, and budget appropriations. So I'm gonna start over to, um, the other from school advisors, and then when he's done, gonna jump back along, um, talk about how we can finance the one point three for A and D, and the two point seven for Brookside Cafeteria.
I just asked a really quick question, but I, uh, Paul, also, at some point, you'll have a phasing of the projects, and what will be phased first, ready for form?
Yeah, I think, uh, I usually do phasing, it's a, we, and, uh, to develop, so that I can allocate any, uh, escalation for the project.
Okay, so the, the first, what would be phased in order?
The first part of the project is going to start with the, uh, locker room addition. The reason for that at the high school is, we need that addition to be built to, uh, to thank for us. One is to create screen space without taking away space, uh, you just base smart, it's based on the district, and it creates a connection to the step building and the, uh, church building, and that's what's agreed, so that we can work on the church and the step building at the same time, and the seven-eight building, basically, in that same, uh, whole, uh, timeline. Because the seven-eight building, built, is a standalone building, I guess, so, we move from the, uh, the, uh, locker room addition, and again, we're working on the step room and the, uh, uh, church, and we blend over to the, uh, cafeteria and, uh, and, uh, the Stevie Commons, so the program can end with the Stevie Commons, in the high school. So the seven-eight building, we build in the same timeline, it's a bit, it's a little later in the program, uh, but you can do it in the same type of timeline, uh, and then, uh, eternal addition, Claremont, uh, can be done, uh, to be, uh, better.
But so, H S and totality, if you're estimating, roughly, based on your phasing, how many? What, what, duration, I don't know.
Construction, uh, we were, we were looking at a construction, uh, that started in, uh, basically, uh, April, May of twenty-seven, and completed, and, uh, April, May of twelve thirty, if there's no possibility, if you have, 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 built down there, and not without, um, it's a couple of misses, that we already spaced work, so it's, it's difficult to work in the high school, and we can't take space away, so you don't have any screen space in our, so we have to create a screen space, so we have to build it somewhat slowly, and then make connections, sort of, usually, so that's, we were starting with locker room addition, build that three-story structure, as that fits, and, and remember that the architects have to design this also, it's a mine for it to design all the furniture, so then we phased the designs out, and what happens is, they, they were gonna be designed for the step building and the church, uh, which falls behind the, uh, locker room addition, so the, and then, uh, we started, well, it's a joint, be quicker than that, uh, a lot of the times, we put in, what, this is the last time we were talking, a couple of things occurred, one is, we stated, they now, for new additions, they now require a, uh, three review, before that three review was, uh, in there, they pretended that you go, and that was required, so now we have to give them time, the architects have to go through, and actually give their full design on the project, uh, that's good for a three review, before they actually hit into designing the project, so that extended the process out over six months, beginning and finishing phases, to get that, uh, design submitted and estimated period. So we had to add, we were covering a eight-month S V timeline in here, so that was, it's stretching the schedule out, because what we're seeing is, it's taking months to get from submission to building, uh, so, and, uh, we still have some, uh, supply chain issues, uh, uh, some issues, some materials that we have to factory, and a lot of those materials have to be ordered, electrical switch here still, and here, plus. Electrical switch here still and here plus from when it's ordered. So it's 14 to 15 months from when it's bid, that gives switch here. Mechanical units are generally eight to 12 months to get mechanical. So we haven't caught up in the stream, a lot of our supply chain problems. So that I have the factory inside the curving, fabric. Now can we do it quicker? Sure. We can, if there's new materials faster, we can do it faster and we can do it quicker. The SED reduces data time on the preview and the poster view. We can give us time. If you look at it, it's 14 months just to stay in view.
Is it fair to say that basically, I hear what you think for the staging area, that's causing a delay? And the way that you're able to finish the OHS project? Is it fair to say that it sounds like 78 building and the OHS project would probably overlap going currently? And potentially 78 building could be done sooner than OHS?
Yes, but when you know it's covered that you're going to get pieces of that time. I'm going to be working on the locker room addition. That one actually starts out in January, that was first on April 27. We anticipate it to be completed in the end of the year, 28. So then now it's turned over to. And then the church and the church and state building. We can start construction in somewhere December, January of 28. And that one goes to, you know, the beginning of the third. So it's going to overlap a little bit on the other project. But then that thing creates a connection. Then we need to open up all the buildings, create the additional space. Which means our using area, we don't have enough space to use. So I'm going to have to basically look at temporary using. Could be. It could be a little bit of a lag between. A little bit of delay between completing the church building. And starting up with the using. Because predict the church building.
Thanks, that's a lot of logistics involved on working on this one, I think. We appreciate that, thank you for sharing that. I just wanted to understand when things will come along, even if it's a little too. If they're making use of space, that's a current thought.
So the only other one, the field work in Nebraska is the 78 building. We're looking at being able to start that in January, February, 27. And that one should be created by April, May of 29. So yes, that will be three to four months to start after.
Oh, if you could just say, there's been some chatter in the community that is inconsistent with information that we as the district have been posting about facilities, that the church is unusable and will be remaining to fund. Please, for the record, how would you respond to that?
I would. So in its current state, it is not usable for this district. But as this project is addressing, so the work that is created is a bond will make the church usable for the district. And it's for the most part, a government project. So what is going on in that space will be a building though. Will be by the state, we buy our architects and engineers. A hundred percent usable legal space.
So 100% usable legal space. Thank you.
And just to clarify on that point, I think some may associate the old man's, the house that's actually there, the church. Just think to also clarify that the house goes away as part of this plan.
Yeah, but that's the, I've got a name for that. The retro, right? And it's lightish beigeish. Brown?
That's correct.
Okay, and then there's a separate piece of property that is blue, which has nothing to do with this, which the school district is not on. It's here, right?
It's awesome.
Thank you, thanks for having us here tonight, and for being here. So to echo Chris's sentiment, his work, Paul's work, with the scope, put the district in a very good financial situation in terms of the potential borrowing based on their potential building aid, minority building aid, as well as their current budget appropriations that have been used for transfer to capital projects that will be claimed to use for the debt service for this project. Kind of tough to see this up here. But in your packet in column one, we have the estimated project costs. And those are going to obviously draw the drive to borrowing and how much the district needs to pay per year. Now, right off the bat, the district anticipated to use the 12 million in capital reserve, which reduces borrowing costs. However, there's still will need to be borrowing for this project, which is anticipated to be phased in as those costs come online. As you can see, 25, 26, 27, et cetera, et cetera. Now, this is going to generate a total estimated debt service for the mission. That those are the funds that will need to be paid by the district due to orders of the bonds or notes in order to repay bonds and pay interest on the bonds. Now, this is the total estimated debt service needing to remove principal and interest. New York State to offset building projects will aid school districts with building aid. So when we received your advice, scope for the 210, we did our work to create an estimated building aid schedule for the life of all the projects. How much would be needed or fall in and create this schedule? And then create, basically create an estimated debt service schedule to try to manage. Now, the difference between those two, the total estimated debt service, unless the building aid is a term we like to call local share. This would be the amount that unless there are other funds available, would impact the district's budget. However, with the budgetary appropriations for the transfer to capital line that will be shifted to debt service, we now have a local share that is at 6.8 million throughout the life of the bond here. And well below, not well below, but basically $50,000 below our 6.9 current budgetary appropriation. What would be estimated to be shifted, what would be shifted from the transfer to capital to the debt service line? As a result of this, there will be no change in the tax levy. As a result of the borrowing, the estimated debt service would be covered by the projected building aid as well as that transfer to capital line. That will now be listed as debt service or proportionate to debt service on your budget.
So you'll notice here that in 2026, I'm sorry, 25, 26, that there is no debt service payment. So we have been talking about what to do with that 6.9 billion. Now, we know that some of that normally can go to certain projects that Jared has. But when we're looking at the scope for the additional work at AMD for the back space, we can use 1.3 billion dollars from the 6.9. And then when we're looking at Brookside cafeteria, we can look, we can use 2.7 on the 6.9. So and you still have a little bit of wiggle room. So we are able to accomplish completing or finishing up Brookside in the cafeteria and kitchen with transfer capital funds in 25, 26 budget. And also you're able to add that additional groundwork to provide some field space for students with the additional 1.3, also in the 25, 26 school budget. So again, this is no impact on the tax levy because again, we have been budgeting 6.95 billion every year for past maybe five or six years, I believe. And so when the debt comes on in 26, 27, that those funds will be used, the 6.95 will be used towards the payment of debt service. So you'll see in 26, 27, column six, budgetary appropriations, it starts with 5.6. And then every year thereafter is 6.9 million dollars. So there's, you can still, even yet, we're with wiggle room in 26, 27 because we are not using the entire 6.95. Well, we're using 5.6 for the first debt service payment. So this is our projections right now. The other thing I just want to point out is that we, as soon as we get a agreement, an actual approval from the board, that we as a team will be going up to visit with SED because they will be the final determiners of how much they are going to get. But as you can see within this plan, there's definitely wiggle room. In fact, the budgetary appropriations is 6.9 and 6.95. So that's what we have here. So in order for all of this to work, it's extremely important that we stay on schedule. You'll notice the goal is September 24th bond update. So we're looking at next week to have the board approve the CEPR for the whole entire bond project. And then have them approve the ability for us to advertise that we're going out for a bond proposition. So that's June 12. Between June 13th and August 15th, community and communication, community engagement will happen. And our superintendent will be going over that, what's the board who's the proposition. August 16th is the date that we have to have the lead notice in the paper about the proposition. And it must be approved by the board. And then finally, the bond update is September 24th. So if we don't stick to that timeline and we go out another year, then we are talking about escalation costs. We're talking about future delays in SED. So the other reason why we have to stick to September as the talent is because there's a presidential election and the machines will not be available to us anytime after that period, September 24th. So I'm going to turn it over back to the superintendent to take a question.
So again, just to highlight, I'm going to circle back to Christine's question about CEPR. So Chris, the network has been going on, they have been doing that level of work. But we'll be ready to present those materials to the board in the next four weeks. Highlight people who work.
Sure, so the CEPR process, you guys remember when we did the driveway project? Oh, yeah, there we go. There we go, there we go. You know, the driveway project, that is on the same plot of land. So we were able to get a lot of the heavy lifting for the CEPR, the archaeology studies, the wetback studies, the species studies, traffic study, all that good stuff that goes into that process. That like we're up in the front. And now it's really revising to be the overall project here. So it's kind of other things that we're working through, which is the darkness with the state historic society. The implications of the project as well. So a lot of the work that we're working on, we're ready for this, and resuscitation is.
Thank you. I have a question about the budgetary appropriations. You said going forward in 27 to 28, you're going to be using 6.9 million of the budget to do debt servicing on this. I think we talked about basically that we're having a bunch of like, we're finally getting left over some each year to handle any other maintenance items going on in the school district. Because what's the plan as far as that goes?
So the plan is again, in next 25, 26 budget, there's a $100 million left over. So we can kind of upfront address the problems with Jared that he don't really face it. And then going forward after that, in 26, 27, there's additional 1.4 million. So 27, 28 is where we need to identify a way to reestablish the transfer of capital. However, we can do that in numerous ways. We can, our capital reserve can go up to $50 million to the second one. So as we have more funds or any leftover remaining funds hopefully, we can increase the capital reserve, it needs a capital reserve to pay for future projects. So those are the things that we can, or just build it up back slowly again, starting off with 1.4 and just slightly increase again. But I don't think we need to get to 6.9. We can just build, we can phase in maybe 250,000, like here, until 27, 28.
Okay, and I know historically it was, it started off at 1.6, I think $600,000. How many years was it around that level?
I don't know, when I got here, it was 675, and that was 13 years.
Okay, it ended up that way, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, that gives me a little more comfort as far as that's concerned.
Um, I'm just wondering, thinking the board with those different options, you know, the board could have a contingency referendum on a ballot. Maybe that if A is voted in and approved and B gets the yes, then B can happen. You can do that. So for example, if you wanted the full turf field, light, et cetera, you know, you can add that on as a separate referendum that's contingent upon the first one getting approved. So those are other options we'll bring to the board.
Is that something we have to have set by the 12th?
Yeah.
Okay, so we need to give you guidance on that tonight then. Okay. And my other question was, just wanted to say it clearly. This revised proposal with the changes that we discussed this evening would have a 0% change in the current tax levy in order to accomplish all of this work. The work would be funded with finances that we already have and will be fine that we've already established going into the future. Is that a correct understanding?
It's correct as long as we have that September 24th.
Understood.
All, all, all after that, it changes again because of escalation.
Okay. Okay, any other questions, everyone?
I have a question. I just, I want to make sure, because let's just say hypothetically, we pass this next week. And whatever you ask me, as a board member, tell me about this bond. And I'm going to say it's a 0% tax levy increase, it's my whole 220 million dollars. Yelled back the project a little bit, took some costs. Now it's 210, it's still going to be a 0% tax levy increase. Anybody that I speak to is going to say, how are you going to spend $410 million and it's not going to cost us any more money? So I'm going to say how I understood this presentation to make sure that I understand it. Basically, we have a debt services line in our budget already. And that amount has remained consistent over the past several years. And we do not have to raise it in order to cover the costs, although it is not covered by the state. Is that, do I have the gist?
Well, we're going to abandon that. Not that you do have it, but I think as soon as you approve it, it'll be very important that everybody have the same upfront speech.
Yes, that's what I meant, thank you.
We're going to work on that as soon as we get the approval. You know, work with my county, you know, with the communications committee to make sure everybody understands what it is and we'll clear several.
All right, yes, please.
Yes, thank you. Only a thought to the heart of my exact concern.
Just, I, we were talking about this in the office, and a, another advisor had a good way to put it on personal finance. When you pay off your car, let's say your car payment is $400. When you pay off your car, $400 a month, you don't have that payment anymore, right? So that's your transfer to capital line budget. Then if you do $400 of rent payment.
Then if you do four hundred dollars in rent payments on your house a month, I don't know what you're doing for four hundred dollars, but doing something. Your monthly expenditure doesn't change, so you don't have to get a new job. But you're just how those expenditures are used are changing. So that's a good way to leave it to that in person.
Another way I see it is we have this six point nine million dollar line, right? And we have been using that for a number of years to fund major construction projects, piece, you know, throughout the district. And this is a way of taking that line, using it to debt service a comprehensive project within five years, rather than taking thirty years to do it, piece by piece by piece. Any other comments or questions? Frank?
I would just get to that. I have some experience with the making here for a while, going through a good portion of the year. If you had to respond, maybe as for paying for the making, we want to work with that for several years. And that's what was basically called a capital line, a little bit like debt service line of six point million. You've got a capital line of six million that you're looking to do. So, but the gist is exactly what was said, which is that basically those incremental projects now sort of have to go through with us. It did work to take on the real needs of the districts, you know, for a lot of this point, but I think we're part of the topic of question.
Right, other side, because I'm looking down, and by the second, it's a lot of that, one percent. Three point three percent, six point two percent. Sixteen percent is a perfect function.
Any other comments, questions?
I've got a few, but I want to give that to the board members.
Thank you. All right, I think the floor is probably yours, Frank.
Just a couple of things on financing, just to clarify. This, are there any dependencies? So for example, like we were talking about, the state reimbursing, give or takes sixty nine percent of what's reimbursable. If that dropped to sixty seven, sixty two, or anything else changed, does that change the calculus on this category of money? And then tied to that, looking at the debt service line, we go out for bonds, obviously. And now we, now we're finding children, and we're finding this a long time since college, but interest rates are high, so the bonds are higher. If interest rates drop in some course, on year one, year two, we don't get to refinance here, right? And take advantage of, say, if it drops to four percent, three percent, and then that again, it works in our favor. So that's two point dependencies, and then understanding actually the debt service going forward.
So the state aid calculation is something that we are going to need to the state to determine, and how much we get. Again, it's ultimately their decision. So what is here is a just forecast. But like I said earlier, the team is going to meet with the state as soon as we get approval, as we from the board, to make sure that we are on the same page with them as what we think that we're getting. I know that fiscal advice is also very conservative. So I believe that we do have enough space here to address any changes in the interest rate. If we go out, they, you know, they do this for a living for all school districts. So I know their projections regarding interest rates are conservative. And as far as being able to refinance bonds, yes, we can refinance bonds. When that time comes, we've done it in the past, like it is why it's here already. So like I said, that is plausible.
So that could actually be doing better, meaning that
We would always say that it's better.
Right, no, I mean, like, if it were a better situation with debt service amount, that we would have to carry on to year thirty. Could actually be, I mean, possibly if the rates drop.
Right, okay. And we actually work with this to avoid that, if we find it, too.
And then against the other dependencies though, to your point, state aid, the other direction is the state aid costs or anything else that I was a long time ago talking about, spending changes, spending fast. What's reimbursed? Does this change at all or is it covered? Like what are any of the financial dependencies that change this? And the opposite direction, that it's not better, it's potentially what's going to come out?
The only thing that they're going to change that would have a big impact is increasing costs due to postponing this project. Those, that we're talking about really developers there, as far as the percentage of bond coming on being whether it's seventy, sixty seven, or sixty nine, is not going to have the same impact as prolonging this process and increasing that two hundred and ten million by another way forward.
Capital reserve is following up, capital, we were talking about, so six point nine is in here. I think you were right, that means about one point three, one point five, one point three is what we call it. That they got in the bank if something happens, or if something else. You can grab it from other places, right, potentially move to capital, give you gun, what it can, just whatever. For the, when we talked about this, we went through that, and asked, now Jared was here, I remember, so they can say, can you just calculate anything, look, you find your town, water if you could, that could come up, that could be more than the one point three based on age of rooms and other major capital requirements that we should we actually can delta it if something happened. And if it's two million dollars, we have it again for someone else, or that's, that's paid for. So can you just clarify, if you have one point three, you also come, you're less than the cost, without having to go to the gas?
First of all, we have control of reserves. So we have the board as the right, really able to translate our money from one reserve to another reserve. Not all of them operate that way, but that is a possibility, that's one. Number two, again, this will go wrong in twenty five, twenty six, and twenty six, twenty seven. So in those two years, we can put whatever fund balance that we think we're going to have into the reserves that can go up to fifty million right now, the second reserve is only at five million. So anything that we have left over, we can put into capital reserves, that's been annoying. We have not fully exhausted our ability to increase the capital reserve yet. And lastly, the third thing, it is just adding money to the budget to reestablish that line. Maybe not obviously a six point nine, but maybe a more four year period. It could get back to two million or one point five. We have been maintaining our buildings, the level of projects that we've done, I think it's a forty million range. That was the last one, is what we've been doing with that capital line. So the idea of having sort of emergency pop up, I don't, I don't see it. And I know I'm speaking with Jared, and he's saying that's not possible either. So the level of work that's happened throughout this, the past ten years, has put us in a position where our buildings are well maintained. We have air conditioned spaces, we have more H E C units, our rooms are relatively, we spent a lot of money on our rooms. So I don't see any big need for a major increase in that line. And if there is a need, there is a plan to address the need without increasing the tax levy by a significant amount of money. Because again, we have multiple reserves, and you can always transfer. Once we fully exhaust the twelve point two million currently within the two capital reserves, we still can put money into that reserve up to fifty million. So again, that's another forty five million. So we can do that at the end of the school year, after we determine how much fund balance we have, and we can start to replenish that one.
I have a question about catastrophic event from the fire.
And I think it would be a challenge.
Yeah, another, that's helpful. So Roosevelt, I know that's T V D. So that would, theory go offline, a part of a school, as a great building, I'm sure, really only at the same time that by six seventy comes online, and what is the year Roosevelt developed that? Think about what we're going to do within, and if not, it's a financial part, what, when we need to decide.
So we have done a walk, with me, Jared, and the superintendent. And we're very excited about what Roosevelt cast of author for district office, educational programs. So we're just now putting pen to paper, a little call, to price that out. So we are working on a plan for Roosevelt, we have done a lot about Roosevelt. But obviously, the students can't move unless they have to learn it up. So that's when we would, I have to purple, but obviously, we have to wait until the building is taken somewhere, and I choose to.
And we would recast the lease, not the room, because they had other space. So that's, that would be ready, the money in perpetuity that we're going to be spending on that space that we can consolidate and use to work on some renovations over there.
Right, because that, that means of increase, not increase, but to get one from lease.
So the next couple of years, two to three years? Driveway, so driveway, right, we funded that. Is the driveway, is there anything that would even change depending? Well, we've got, assuming we improve this as the board, we have this as the plan. Anything we would need to do change to adjust the driveway, I know, as we discussed, so is it one way, two ways to improve or not, or if that will lock down, we're good with that? We want to make sure, like, we have to do different private stuff depending on how this.
I don't know if it's been an additional cost to the driveway. I don't know if my eyes, whether it's one way or two way. The size of the roadway is going to be the same as what's before. Now, while that cost are built into the four point six, that's a change. And again, that, that kick off, we need to, that starts tomorrow.
So just to back to the field, just to understand, so option A is already in this as part of the plan, correct? Okay, so that's a building level play area. So now we have B, which is a grass level beyond the play area. And then C, that grass field plus a synthetic turf field and tennis court.
Synthetic turf field, creatures, lighting, fighting.
Okay, so aside from the cost, and now it's, as you said, it's not insignificant. It's an additional one point three million to do B, and an additional eight million to do C, and that's pretty much it. So putting the cost aside, in just one second, by not doing the, I don't remember, like, why the field for putting in the first thing is that, I, well, if you don't do, you really don't have a lot of space, or it's like, oh, tennis courts would be really nice to have, and we can do other things with it. Someone talk to the Y for B and C, because I think the board is going to be thinking about it. Wait, no, but, right, yeah. Or are you saying I'm down the road, you can go with A now, which is priced there, and then it's down the road, it's, okay, but that, let's add C, let's add.
You could, you could have put it on, you could have moved it as part of the propositions for next week. And I believe, really, working on the role, it can be changed part to that forty five day, and we don't have to add a second proposition.
Okay, so, how do I understand that? So we could?
So next week, if you want to have it as part of the proposition, you have to approve it next week, both propositions. However, if you want to not include it on the date of the vote, and you change your mind, then we can take it off the proposition and just have that one proposition. Before the forty five day.
Got it.
Before the forty five day, which is August sixteenth.
So we, we're the, we just can't add right after the twelfth? Okay. But your question was kind of, was this something that we really needed for programming? Or was it, it just made really good financial sense to just do it now?
It's both. I want to make sure, like, if we're going to go, we're going to have four grades under five sixty. Is there enough field space before the age group gets to have it?
I thought of building a full turf field, track, leechers, lighting, and tennis courts was because, first of all, you don't have tennis courts that kids commute to for P E. So it was thorough conversations in this community as to why we needed to look at that. People have different opinions, but here's twenty twenty four. And tennis is a unit in all P E classes, and it provides the ability of the district to maintain their own tennis courts to look at rather than sharing it with an overall approach to community independence. It's a bad, many districts have taken. The other part is that you've got a lot of usage of fields here, a lot of usage having a turf field gives you more usage, it takes away with from the regular maintenance in the same way a regular grass field would be. And there isn't need for, for that, this is a beautiful space. The idea of being able to do that adds to your instructional program, and it adds to your interscholastic program, and it adds to community use as well, creating more spaces that the community can use. The option B is basically clearing all of that sloped land, all of the, and just making that a seeded grass field. Obviously, not the same level, but it will be an additional field you can use to have interscholastic athletics. And the first option, that outdoor recreation space, that is enough to just do your P E program. It's kind of like a mirror of what exists now, and you're spending it along.
And do we have that at all, calculation of what that would be, what that, that would be, what that would be? That goes to zero, one, one, five?
So with the, the option B, which is in the transfer of average, it's a one point three, one point four.
Okay, that's, that's outside of the, so that, so that proposal is, we're proposing, you're recommending B, but not doing it part of this, that would be one.
So, well, what we want in that, it does take the body to a tax to that body of about zero point two percent increase of the small increase, but it does change those negative numbers to positive numbers.
Right, that's if you put B at the red point, what if you put C?
I don't have the numbers for that yet.
If that had point five, six, I don't remember where that number was. That number, is that a?
Okay, so C would be, okay, so the recommendations would be don't put it on, on itself. Okay, so that's, that's. Then this other thing, synthetic turf field and tennis courts, that's not a program, programmatically, that would allow a lot of tennis to happen here versus maybe now.
The team goes, I think, to support that Nelson Park.
So is there a cost for that, or a cost?
But the units for tennis are done indoors. You cannot, you cannot teach the P E units of tennis as part of your curriculum for physical education. Right now, tennis exists as an extracurricular, I mean, an interscholastic sport. And it's used, it's done on a field that we don't maintain, we don't control, share with the community. And there is that, you know, traveling time for teams to get there and to use it.
So if you didn't do that as part of this, so two parts to this question. C, by doing A and B, A in on B out, it doesn't ever prove this would be C. C is additive, or C would not have been three years, five years, but the financial part of that is we only got six nine capital that's going here. Would not, there we have eight million potentially to do this down here, transferring out. So just like here now, like, don't do it now, just know, if you really want to do this, can we do it from an architectural standpoint? That was a financial point, we have to find that money elsewhere, and it's capital to, you know.
You have to find some of the community, right, somehow?
Right now, I have an option A, it's just the same, could you be just working on the building and bringing space for it? Option B, if you pull the earthworm to create the tears, move the trees, create the tears, topsoil and seed to turn the whole field into grass. So it would mirror what you have in, just moving up the same tier that you see there. And then if you wanted to down the road, put it in a turf field, yes, you can. You know, the, all the earthworm will be created, so the tears will You know, the, all the earthworm will be created, so the tears will be created. So you could be willing to put in tennis courts or, um, what fields at the end of time, that's what we decided.
I actually have a question, I think this is an answer. If the, these first two years of the segment, or, um, there appears, if we still have that, um, if we still have. Propriations, and is any, do you, is any of that usable potentially for any of the fields? And so the first year, if you want, if that, the appropriation is great, that's, we'll give a point down. We had that number show, it's a point nine, great, that's still there, which is touch on right now. I guess what I'm asking here is, those two years, if we have any, any, extra, um, that, that appropriation, if any of the money is used? If we needed purposes of fields that we can use.
So, um, twenty five, twenty six is the only year in which we're not changing six point nine. Twenty six, twenty seven, we're using five point six of the six point nine. So of the six point nine in twenty five, twenty six, we've already said that we're going to allocate two point seven to Brookside and one point three, um, to, um, to A and B. So that's four million dollars and that leaves us the two point nine million dollars. So the two point nine million dollars, again, can be used to pay for direct projects. But to your, for your question, yes, we could use it, um, towards the eight million to pay for, um, the fields, but we still have to come up with the additional four million.
So the additional four, so, so if everything I'm hearing, it sounds like having the boards, having, well, a lot of board have maximum flexibility, I say, option A, I mean, would probably be best to help us forward as well, right? Having made the decision tonight, right? So, and then we have to sign it, we may now, August sixteenth, I've heard discussions, having, it allows us to, that, that, so, thank you for that.
And then we still have it, we still have the books, the books, so.
Right.
You don't know how much money we have available, is there a conversation there too?
Right, so that's why having that flexibility would allow us to, okay, what decisions we can make.
It's the only difference, and we're talking about option A, which is two hundred and ten million dollars, and then an option B, and for purposes of vote. The only difference in the scope of that would be this turf field, the lights, the leechers at this point, the all three story atrium.
Uh, I think those are questions, we're not after gravel. We're just trying to talk about putting things in, I think, from, uh, the, the, I guess, one of the questions I have with the greatest deal with the option B is, would we break the softball back out? We have to try to, we could put that, would there be funding, if they could be able to do that kind of thing, we used to, a mental thing, this is basically part of the grass. The sense I have of the time and that we're trying to avoid, this is that, we don't want to end up like, you know, you're looking at the island, the option, just hold that. So, um, my sense of this is that option B, Aces, in terms of getting buildings, getting grass, getting the field worked on, if we break the softball on, that would be a great first step. And then the future board can decide if you want to put out a, always put out a bond, that's sort of the expansive initiative that, uh, are it, arts, athletics, or one specific thing. Want to mention that there's something in it for everybody, so that's just my two cents, I think, if we're, have the option, at the point, at the five percent increase, sort of add more expansion approach. I don't know where the place where they have.
I really like the idea of having some sort of contingency option. So if we want to put out, like, uh, include maybe, uh, like my suggestion, that option B, where the grass cleared, herb trees are cleared, and we have a level playing field. And then still include, you know, maybe, uh, just past a, a tough budget with a lot of support, maybe we have support that we realize to give the voters an option to say, you know, we're only with a whatever percent tax, we'll be increasing, we don't care. Number right now, um, to say, yes, if we want to build that, that turf field right now, or no, we don't, or we're good with the bulk of the project. I think having that flexibility in the ballot might be, um, really impactful, so, um.
I would encourage us to look at other options, just to be open to your options, opposition, if I'm concerned, is there time on this? Um, you know, we've got to make this decision by next week. And so I think, like, the charge of this board, if we go out and ask, well, it's zero, but at the end of the day, we got to have, we actually did, we do all the earthwork, which I think was a future board in a great position. Like, you know, that's like, and like, when you build a store, you should put stories on top, that's what the board's used to get, it's based on, so like, it's what we're thinking. If you're getting million, you're going to ask about, um, maybe you go in the, maybe you're doing something, you know, it's all going down the road, you're doing something, but, 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 but. But, I have to just caution us, if you got, potentially make that decision. I think if you want to look at things other than this, the field, that, uh, because we, we can still keep the B, though, that's, that's world decisioning, to be, maybe, you have to give us a little bit of wiggle. So, my, I, that's why I'm saying, maybe, that's the key, we've got the A, let's go with the, 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 we, 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 we play that a little bit.
No, B, B is not, B is not.
It's a future budget, the, the board could change that, right? And we're, we're saying we intend to do that in twenty five, twenty six budget, but they come to that point, but I would say, you know what? We're not going to, uh, be in that, we're going to have that whole space behind school, and we have that, so.
Well, this, this board can decide, or twenty five, twenty six.
Yeah, I'm just saying, yeah, but it's a future decision, it's something we're, we're, it's a lot, like, you just, you might have to report members.
No, this, that, the, the future board, this current board, will be voting on the twenty five, twenty six budget.
Can I clarify something because I'm really under trouble in conversation? Can we call it, like, field option for one, two, and three, and bond vote option A, and expanded option B, something like that? Because I've heard a lot of these, but I'm not sure we're all talking about this.
Okay, so option A is in twenty seven. Option B is in twenty five, twenty six budget. Option C is eight million dollars.
Okay, so when we go out for a vote, if we wanted to have a second option for the community to vote, a contingency option, we would be talking about it to base two hundred and ten option. With the understanding that also, that also included the field B, but we were just preventing the budget, okay? So that's set for us in that, I'm going to be A, and a contingency budget, if you're voting on A, you also want to vote on this expanded plan, which would include, and then that's a conversation that I guess we need to really be starting to think about tonight, is, do we want that kind of thing? And would it only include the turf field, leechers and the lights? Is there a recommendation from administration, if you're going to go, you're going to ask the community, hey, do you also want to include some extras? Is there a list of extras for us that you have that we could think about, whether or not we wanted to put that in as a contingency option?
I'm going to speak from the finance perspective and also from a timing, timing perspective. Um, we met the charge of zero percent. Um, we went through the budget, the scope with the final to cope. We applied different funding sources to get it at zero. Um, so to try to introduce any additional scope within the timeframe that we are in over the summer is going to be very difficult. I can't speak from the superintendent and all stop, but if, if, my, I, I, I know numbers. And once you put a number out there, that's what sticks. So the two hundred and fifty million dollars, quarter million, billion dollars stuck. So we can't go back and forth with numbers. If we want to change something within the scope of this project, it has to be within this package, so we are at zero percent. However, I would not suggest doing that, given the least, the, 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 the lack of, uh, community, uh, attention over the summer. And us having to hit the ground running in September. So to present our brand new scope, um, additional scope, um, in September, that gives us like two weeks. Um, and then that's it, um, we're already in June. Um, I think we should try to figure out number one tonight, if we want to have it as a proposition, whatever the, you know, it doesn't have to be just the, um, just the fields. However, the only thing we need to decide tonight is to report that to us today.
Okay, so I, I just want to make sure I'm understanding, so your recommendation at this juncture is to have, um, the bond valid. Option A, which is the two hundred and ten, zero percent, and then a contingency of an extra, um, not a zero percent, a zero point whatever, that would include the leechers and the fancy turf thing.
I'm not, I'm not making a recommendation for a second proposition.
Okay.
I'm just saying, if you want that, then you need to decide, you have to make that decision.
Understood, but you're not.
I'm not making a recommendation to.
Okay, but if we want that, you're not in a position to tell us any information beyond this, uh, third option, the field. That's the only thing we're speaking about with the, okay.
I, just, just to refrain, like, the contingency budget, if you want to stay with, that's, that's a different animal in itself, but we quite, especially two sort of propositions, bond propositions. One for what we're talking about A tonight, and then do you have a second one or not? The B option is even a bond proposition, that's a lot.
So I'm just going to use, because you take A and B, and are, are, they're meaning two different things in what we're, we're talking, so I want to try to clarify what we're talking about. Right, so the legal definition of this is called, I know that we did, like, the, the law council corrected us, it is called a contingency option. So that's why we're using that terminology as opposed to a multi, you know, an additional and alternative option, because we were corrected on that. So the concept is, is that here's the two ten, it meets our program needs. That additional money that, uh, that, uh, the people behind me for coming up with this one point three million, that we're clearing here. You can do that, if it's in your authority to do that in this year's budget, next year's budget, about this board. This bigger item, which came from, that's why it was in the two hundred and fifty five million dollar option, was this additional outdoor play area. It's such a significant amount of money, that was the thought behind it. It's an alternative that this board could decide if they wanted to, like, test the waters and see if this is something that you really want. Put it out, and it was based on the size and the number, and it's unique, this all together with, so it's just an option to explore.
Okay, and if the ship is sailed on, for example, including in that second, that contingency option, we don't have to worry about it, it's, I can, that would become an expanded bond scope, whatever, contingency option. There's no wiggle room at this point, that this stage is going to stay, and that would also include the Brookside gym, and that would also include, uh.
What you would have then is the original cost, right, that if you wanted to put those things in, and you have that original cost, you have those numbers.
Got it, right, okay, okay, so then, um, bear with me as I, it's, okay, so for this, uh, so we want to, right? So we could conceivably on the twelfth say, hey, we came up with a zero percent option, that's one. We can also, if you like that, you want to vote on the original two hundred and fifty six million option, can you do what you're saying? Or, right, and we can authorize that on the twelfth, and that doesn't mean we have to actually put that in a proposition in September. Is that clear?
I mean, you can pull it in one twenty five days, but again, the two hundred, it's not that you're giving people two choices, you have, you have to pass this one.
Uh huh, and then if you like that, as a base, then you have this.
You want to upgrade to the XL?
Yeah, there you go, it's better for less, but.
Okay.
And here, yes.
I would personally have to hold tight that, because I don't know if you could say, um, two ten and then two fifty six, and then go back and change the coverage to the, um.
Understood, okay, I, I guess, if we have the exact amount of that outdoor, we know exactly what it is, you have that all, you know, but we have to go back and then take a look, we do all those counts on. I'm going to add back the atrium, I'm going to add back this thing, but what are the numbers, we have two fifty five number, which is based on a twenty three, twenty four number. We, I don't think, we didn't need to confuse it, that was such an item that was so unique and distinct and separate, that had a significant price tag. Some communities do do contingent on one thing, that's just an option.
All right, let me take stock of where the trustees are at, unless there are more technical questions. We can kind of issue spot, narrow down issues that we have to decide tonight, and then what we're going to be considering.
Right, and, and what information do you need from us for your discussion this week?
All right, so do you have any other clarification, like, I said? Um, I remember we were talking about the high school, and it's all that over a hundred percent capacity, and I just want to make sure that maybe these pullbacks, we still have to face, okay?
You have nineteen questions, yes.
Great, thanks, no problem. Okay, uh, Melissa, okay. Okay, thank you, all right, so let me start to take the pulse of the board, plus two ten.
That's right, I have one more question. This is the, that, now, if you don't go to ask, it's very funny, that there is no chance at all for that anything looking, like, like a bigger space. And what it is, referring to the atrium, or no, what, what it is currently, if it looks more like a hallway, right? There's going to, you know how you bring that, that courtyard, you bring glass over that, right, sure, it's, that's a, it's almost like a two story space, right? This area is going to be a one story space, there is no possibility that, you know, like a two story space. But what we're going to need is the highest pocket, and we're not looking to turn it into a lounge, right, like, a lounge, like, space, so, um, it hasn't, we're in, like, pretty design right now. We're not, we're not looking, I think, to get to design, no, but I think I understand, it's, it's, it's just, they're.
We need, we, I was just.
They are.
I don't even know, I, I, I wouldn't have words on the, trust me, yeah.
Okay, so, pulse of the board, I'm getting the sense that we're on board with presenting the two ten, zero percent option. And, and sort of green line on there, okay. You know, looking at what some other school districts have done, I know Georgetown had two options, right, when they went out for a bond. I, I, I know that, but Pleasantville done it, I know that there are other districts that have done it. Without getting into the weeds on what that might be, just philosophically, is there a appetite for this board to potentially consider a second option on the, the, by this club?
That's right, I don't know. I think what's going to happen next week is the secret resolution is coming first. So that secret resolution is going to be specific to this project. So it's not possible to have a proposal proposition without a secret resolution before it. So they can't have, like, an imaginary resolution without scope, because you have to have secret approved prior to, um, the, the resolution being announced.
So what are these other districts doing? Are they improving, like, expanded secret resolutions, is that how it works?
They probably did that work earlier, um, and, and, and developed two different propositions and, um, did separate secrets for it, like for, like, we have next week.
Okay, so, I mean, if you're telling us there's no option to do the option.
Well, we, we have the secret for the eight million dollar project, we have the secret for the fields, because it's.
With nothing else?
No, no.
Okay, well, that's helpful, we have, we have, all right.
And if you have.
So if we were going to do an option, second option on the proposal, it would just be, the, the upgraded fields. Okay, so is there an appetite from this board to vote on the base option, which we already relented, as well as the expanded option? And have that to discuss next week?
I think we need to see what that number, what came from, right, so for me, my, so, my answer is yes, and here's a thinking of that. You might point, like, pointing that everything that was taken down to two fifty, sixty, two ten, it was essentially aesthetic. Los Roosevelt, the only thing that didn't seem aesthetic was, and you were, yeah, the plus of the clear mountain.
Los Roosevelt, the only thing that didn't seem aesthetic was, and you were, yeah, the plus of the clear mountain came, was the prosody. That was A O A Jim, which was a love for rhythm. So to me, if everyone took a two ten, voted out, that to my opinion, yeah, I, I would consider from C out there, I'd say, last field, which is aesthetic, ten is, but you just need to know what that means. It's going, that goes zero point two, two eight, it's going to one point two, that would impact my decision on that. Because if we put all these out there, it is still a one, two number. So I think you just need to know what that spread or that delta is between this, you know?
Yeah, we would have to know it that way, because the project, the whole project, it would have two sub-projects. So yeah, that's where we have the possibility to pull that out. If, right, if you have another, if you have anything, have anything to say later, another side of the, of the, of the-
And then fields, to reduce, to reduce the last fields, this board will, I mean, everyone, that does your luck, dude. Everyone here will be voting that, that's one point twelve, that, if they're one point three, and, yeah, maybe it's could change, but in theory, this board will make that decision, hopefully. So I think yes, to see that, but it's important.
Thanks, Mark.
Alright.
I have a question, because I'm, I'm a bit concerned on the board's side, and it scaled back the music, like, vote, that is part of the proposal, from what I've heard, so. And, uh, I still, we have the high school, are we keeping that two-story edition in place, that's all there? So this, this is the first one, I assume to me, that we had, we had, we had a, we had a two-story edition that was scaled back, and that's initially part of the, around two fifty. So, we, it wasn't part of two fifty, no, we had the two-story edition, was, the two-story edition was prior to two fifty, and then it got scaled back to a single-story edition, which is included in two fifty. So it changes the old building, it's a new building, it's a new edition. So it, it ends up being like a story, and you have to create the thought that you need to have for the use of it. And, you know, I mean, conceptually, I'm struggling with just how to like, make that a project, again, one of those, maybe. So I guess, from my perspective, um, the pulse being ahead is, you have, and then the option being the bond, I mean, once we forget, putting back elements of this at the end of that, I wouldn't stand the feeling of on their own, that, that is an important piece for the community, that you can leverage to use for expanding experiences across the board for everyone. We had, it goes a lot of tours on the middle school, a lot of work, that went down, but a lot of fields, so. Really, they should gather, in order to basically sort of address this issue, so. My two cents is on that, it's late, again, yes, for zero, it'll be complicated, it's a lot of, in terms of how, uh, approach. I think very, I think that some of the things that were done, were done very, like, a sight walk through, in which there were some things that were just not, not even about cutting it, because of the cost, but rather feasibility, if I'm not mistaken, right? Because there are some things that, I mean, walk through, hey, this wouldn't make sense because it would change, but it just wasn't working by making space, right? Walk through, that, that, and then it hurt, right? Like, let's say, like, let's say that music, like, I, because I, I know it's like, that music, like, that will break the new building again, but then there was some complexities with that, and trying to know that, that was creating, that, that was problematic.
Now, there was, there was options that we were also discussing at that time, to leave the music building and just put a small addition on it, so that we don't, we won't, we don't, um, take that building, put it down. That was on the table for discussion, but that, that building would not allow you to heighten the music, so. So as for the walk through, um, it was decided that, you know, you really need the full, like, classroom to have an appropriate, and encompass your, uh, areas. And also, the exterior space is totally unde�, so then that became incorporated into it. So that becomes another, um, student space that-
Okay, well, yeah, I think it was, when we spent a lot of time in the music area, and what to just renovate it, was literally unacceptable. It, it needed a new, it needed the design that's here, it needed it, and it incorporates more of the outside. I mean, I'm going through the land art survey, what are we renovating here? Like, that was an option we had to explore, to make it a big, a significant impact in the program of music. Kids were in here at the time, this design adds more volumetric, takes over more space, and it is, it is absolutely needed, in my, my opinion, as an educator for music in my experience.
So let me just, putting philosophy aside, which I fully appreciate your philosophical points, right? Just strategically, um, what is the downside? Because strategically, I, and the psychology behind it, of giving voters a choice, um, I'd be interested in taking some more time to see if that has a tendency to pass more bond votes, or not. Um, so I guess my question is, is there a downside to doing the full secret at this point in time? And approving from the board's end, all of this, and then deciding, taking some time to do this research, and decide philosophically and strategically, weighing into really, what's our final decision gonna be in the next few weeks? Wait, and if, just a question for Alita, like, what's the downside to doing that?
I mean, again, the downside, is that you have to hold what's on that, that's why I have to ask you. So the two ten, oh, one two ten, and then, right? There's no secret process that's going to happen after. We, we can push back, that's we need to follow, but that's just taking time away from us getting ahead of, um, being able to, um, work with parents and the community, to understand that we are a big role in the heart of our, of our, of our school.
I appreciate that, I'm trying to be respectful of trustee Schneider's position, which is, let's just go with the base two ten, and not consider the, the accelerator, the enhanced field project at this time. And I'm trying to understand, is that's, can, is there a downside to deciding that piece of this a little bit later than next week? Like, can we move it along next week with the enhanced field project? And then decide if we're gonna take that off later?
Yes.
Okay, and there's no downside to doing that?
No.
Okay, so that would, I guess, I would feel comfortable doing that, is it would give me some time to think strategically about what's more likely to get a bond passed, in terms of the options.
But, but the only thing I would say, because I, I recall that we have that secret before, right before, um, the resolution, for the proposition, so we can have some base secret, um-
So the secret will only be up to the enhanced field project, that's it, right? Whatever.
The C.
Yeah, that's my turn, that's it, like, that's all we're talking about.
Yes.
That's the end?
Yes.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, so is there a green light on that? And then, what, what, all we wanna know is on the twelve, just what's the best answers on that, that's it?
So maybe the two ten, or two eighteen, right?
Basically, yeah. And then, Mary, I know that you have done this many times over. Do you have access to any information on that, sort of strategically, use of this, that you might be able to send out already?
I can ask, you know, other, other school districts for this, yeah. I'll see, I'll see, we do much of our writing, and doing some work, and some, so we'll see if we can get this.
Okay. I agree with you. Thank you, I was, like, that was, I felt like that was a really hard work, but it was very rewarding, it was ever worth it. Yeah, we're gonna agree on this issue, right? Uh, agreed on, okay. Um, thank you very much for doing this for us, it has been a very long journey, but we've completed three pieces, and I definitely, you've been here every time we ask, we have more information, and it's been invaluable, and it's really exciting, so thank you so much for doing that. I give word, and have been everybody, Alita, for the, like, exhaustive work on this. Um, we want to next week to vote on it. Um, yes, I will make a motion to quickly add a, um, board dialogue piece to the meeting, there's just the housekeeping stuff that I'm gonna do real quick. Oh, um, yeah, I'll do that, I'll make a motion to, I'll do that first, I'm making a motion to add another public comment and section. So, same. Uh, and any discussion, all in favor, or opposed, intention? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come to the mic and make any sort of public comments related to really any education item at this point? Step on up, please feel free to state your, oh, I just can't, like, name, address, and, uh, three guys.
Okay, quick, uh, seventy words, seventy words were wrote, um, happy to see that the, the math's gotten through. Just wanted to point out that last year, there was also another student body organization that was tasked with, they had a math class, they came up, they had to say math class, so I think that also was very nice, uh, on this year's group. It was very important to get, but still it was last year, because they also, we got them, that's all.
Thank you. You know, I know Nicole has been trying to keep the, the students who were the initial drivers of all this in the loop, but we will make sure that, to the extent that she can, she definitely reaches out to them. Many generations of students working on this, so we're very appreciative, thank you for your comment. Um, yeah, there's someone else? You guys have anything to add in the back there? Wanna make a comment now? Alright, um, we'll go to our virtual attendees to see if there are any virtual hands raised for commentary. Okay, no virtual showing of hands, I will now take a motion to add a board dialogue section to go through a few housekeeping items. Uh, any discussion, all in favor, uh, opposed, intentions, I'm getting my notes. Um, so just three things I wanted to address. I know that, um, the board works diligently to revise the board handbook, I believe that that is within our, our policy committee. Um, so just making sure we're all aware of that, and I'm sure it'll come back to us for a final look. Um, our retreat is scheduled for July twenty-fifth, um, eight thirty to four. Agenda, um, has not been finalized yet, but I was able to get Jane Womber's availability. He can work with us virtually from two thirty to three thirty to go through some forms. So before I sort of bring light on that, I just wanted to double check the board that's paid, and the injections. With him, it's gonna be a one-hour session. The retreat itself, I don't know if you answered that question, location TBD? A lot TBD, but I didn't deliver it, Jenny. Okay, so I'll do that, and then, um, I know that there was an issue with some of our committee meeting notices, I'm just letting those trustees know that we gotta follow Mary nearly, so we can figure out, um, how to make sure that everyone is on the same page and being notified. Um, I think that's all.
About three years, and I think we'd be a good idea, a board calendar, that we just add cards that would have the reference, so that everybody was on the same page, whether or not committees are not, you know? And I think, you know, it could be managed, while the case is shared calendar, or we could just basically put it out. I think that eliminates a lot of this kind of stuff, you know, and every board struggles with it, but I think that, you know, that's-
Do you think like a, like a blue calendar, like a little, or like a-
Like a, a board, a board calendar, even, or, or? And you just lay on top of your calendar, decide now, get it, or you just decide on it?
And I know the governance committee is actually, that's one of the things that you're working on, right? The year you kind of live the board, uh, with like approximately days in check, it's in like perfect sense, you can add all the stuff to that.
I think you may have something, like, on your, uh, calendar, but like retreats and things like that, you just lay it right on your calendar, and everything else is fair.
That's great. Okay, I think that's all I have, I just wanted to make sure, any questions, anyone else have any time?
Just the, uh, if you want, I can start with the committee, I think the code of conduct committee met today. Um, you'll be, you may ask, you may, you may take the, the terrorists that are getting out to the big numbers on the board, and that was, you know, but it was really kind of three things that happened in the committee today. Um, there was a conduct of, 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 which is basically how you want to ensure consistency across the schools in terms of how they apply different, um, interventions, um, and making sure that the line quit, the code of conduct. Uh, terrorists was there, it was a question that they're at, or to make safety regulations for teachers at the end of the day for, for employees, so the department, like, we're issued, but at a high level, that's, you know, you can fly on the wall, but a lot of work being done, that it made it, uh, just a patient, a whole educated work to kind of make sure that we're watching things in a hierarchical fashion, constantly.
Uh, the communications thing, the, uh, the communications thing that is after you, uh, the primary focus was on, um, today's presentation.
So there's a committee that, uh, also, I'm trying to, I want to, uh, talk about, uh, hopefully, maybe, uh, tonight, uh, I have to see, kind of, capable, uh, capable, I'd say, sure, should we, we have the way to help.
I just don't guess I would say, what's, like, um, what, uh, I mean, I mean, there, there, so. Nice to chat, there were some students, then I know, probably saw, um, that was, then I found around, uh, legislation to have students as exhibition, you know, at school, or in university. So we had some, um, students come and speak, uh, from school districts that have a lot of, you know, process, and gave some insight, and they're there, and serving, um, and had, like, their understanding of how, um, just policy and how, uh, school districts operate, how the work is done, um, on these late nights, that no one really knows that unless you, they don't, unless you, we helped go and speak, that had, in turn, a board, and a plan, so I made a joke about that. But, um, it was nice to see, you know, um, students, um, really kind of talk about their leadership, but also talk about their respect, and I think we talked about the last board meeting, or it was kind of floated around a dialogue, um, invitations that we had about making sure that students may not usually be stepping up to the, for those leadership, opportunities, have opportunities, things like that, and service, that's the issue that we've been talking about. How they specifically try to stay away from just going down, and that conversation, okay, of course, we said it, you know, the, the students who are, they, they, we made, of course, they're not necessarily, right? Because number one, they probably are very busy, and you can all wear a board, and there's a whole lot of other things we're doing too. But two, it also gives opportunity for other students to come step up, the leadership that they don't necessarily have, and it also gives, um, an opportunity for, um, I mean, uh, students to bring back to their kids, things that they're, um, in a broad way, um, so this is a really good thing here this week. Um, one, school districts come from the first ever, um, and, and our partnership, probably, I mean, then, um, Sarah, this is, she, uh, her question, college, she didn't, called her, and she, she very, um, you know, very inspiring, just to hear, you know, in the conference, and her voice, and how they, um, really, really, you know, rose the atmosphere, that they had to kind of say, they're part of the classes, that this was from a level that they, that was existing, right? And that is, um, this is, yeah.
Our, our policy, our, like, calls first, and the liaison for, um, to, 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 we have that in our past, we have students-
You're doing events, before they come, and, and, and part of that, there's gonna be a lot of change in this particular, this year, so. Yeah, and that's also, so, um, students, right, so, I have my path, and then- so I have my path to the other day.
I, I mean, I guess it's, you have to change to make policy wise for that to, um, be available here, I do not, you know.
And also on practice, right, I was making this, the, this district, and all the respect it should, of course, whether it's on committees that we have, um, there's been all passes, we have come to the board, we need to pray as we can for these presentations, which is not really typical, I think, we're asking, you know, um, a typical, right, it's a must to do that, so I think to that point, we already have practices, which will be definitely, of course, so would be a, a big shift if we decide to go back around, um, to, to that kind of.
I can also ask, because that's, uh, you, I don't know that, or, that it's, actually, I don't know, that it's been widely, it's been, it's been, cities that there is, it's totally first. I think it's starting at some point before COVID, um, there were sheets that were being, or, I don't know, a lot of our bad ones, but I guess not.
We can, like, put a timeline in our governance calendar, and, and here to send out a, um, interesting, our invitation.
Is everybody, it's compromised, it's, it's.
Yeah, the policy says that, um, the student, we, by the, so, we can still put it in our. Yeah, so we're like, hey, let's, where are we on this? Okay. Anything else? All right, I will take a motion to enter into executive session to discuss a matter related to, um, effective marketing and, um, uh, second. Uh, and speak with your call counsel, that'll be the motion. So, sorry. Any discussion? All in favor? I oppose, have sent you, we are in room.